Good afternoon. We'd like to thank all of you for coming to be a part of this meeting. We know there are various presentations. For those that have done such an excellent job serving our children in the classrooms, and you are at the end of the road as far as the teaching part or whatever part you've played in making our school system run, we just want to say thank you and show you how much we appreciate what you've done. And then there are students that are going to be awarded and rewarded for their diligence and perseverance, and there are parents here that have supported throughout the year, and coaches. And so, to all of you, if we don't get the opportunity to say so, we thank you and we appreciate you for being here with us this afternoon. With that being said, if you plan on making public comments, we ask that you do fill out the form and please make note of the criteria, making sure that everything runs smoothly as you would want. All right, at this time, when we stand for our pledge of allegiance to the flag, which will be led by Mr. David Buckles, and our invocation will be led by Mr. Justin Campbell, I am going to ask personally for a moment of silence in recognition of Ms. Patty Lashah Henderson. She worked in our school district at Aquila and Price Middle School, and she's no longer with us in body but in spirit. She was also our Support of the Year for the District, meaning she got it done. And so, if we would just have a moment of silence in honor of her, and then Mr. Buckles will lead us in the pledge and we'll have our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would join me in prayer by bowing your heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with humble hearts, seeking your guidance and wisdom as we gather for this school board meeting. We acknowledge that you are the source of all knowledge and understanding, and that we give you praise for that. Grant us the ability to listen attentively, seek with clarity, and act with integrity. Help to prioritize the needs of our students above all else, to ensure that their educational experience is enriching and nurturing and inclusive. Guide this body's decisions and deliberations that common ground can be found and worked together harmoniously for the betterment of our schools. Give strength to overcome any challenges faced and grant the courage to make bold decisions that will lead to positive change. May your wisdom inspire fair and just in all of our actions. We entrust this meeting to your hands for your name. Amen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Campbell. At this time, we call for Mrs. Tanya Whitehurst in recognition of our retirees. Following that, we will have our Feed the Need presentation by Mrs. Stacy Isit Isold. I sold, had it right the first time. And then, FHS AA winter academic team championships, Mrs. Drew. And then, the Teacher of the Month by HCA Florida, Putnam Hospital, and the Educational Foundation of Putnam County. We will go in that order.
Good afternoon, Board. It is always an honor to continue to recognize our retirees, and we've been celebrating them as they've been coming in and signing their paperwork in our office. So today, we would like to recognize Ms. Julie Carter. Ms. Julie Carter has been with us with the district for 23 years, and her most recent assignment has been at Middleton Bernie Elementary School as a teacher. So if Ms. Carter is here, yes, there she is, if you'll come on up. Next, we have Charles Coxwell, who has been one of our ROTC instructors at Palaca Junior Senior High School. He has served Putnam County for 16 years and has a total of 20 with the Florida Retirement System.
How can I present this address to the Board so they can just have a copy?
Just like to give them a copy?
I'd like to speak if I could, but...
Okay. Can he speak this one we're done? He just wants to do the address.
Yes, sir. You may.
You can do that when you're done. Next, we would like to recognize Ms. Katrina Fiola. She has recently been a teacher at Crescent City Junior Senior High School, and although she has only served us for three years in our district, she has been with the school districts. She was with Flagler for several years before. She has served for 33 years in our schools. You have not. Well, if they watch this, they're going to know. Next, we have Ms. Monica Hendrith, who has served for 20 years with the school district, and she is at Mosley Elementary School as a classroom teacher. We have Ms. Regina Simmons, who has been with us for 15 years and is currently a teacher at Middleton Bernie Elementary School. And our final recognition today is Ms. Cheryl Woolwine, who has been with the Department of ESE as our Technology Specialist for 31 and a half years, and has total 35 years and two months with FRS. I do just want to briefly mention, we have three others that are not able to be here, but they have been longtime employees. Ms. Peggy Hawsey, who is a paraprofessional at Interlaken Junior Senior High School. She has been with us for 22 years and two months. Ms. Brenda Jordan, who is a paraprofessional at Mellon Learning Center. She has been with us for 23 years and eight months. And Ms. Lori Stanfield, who has been a bus driver for 28 and a half years.
Putnam County and the city of Palaca, thank you for this honor and your gratitude. Fifty years ago today, I was a ninth grader in junior ROTC. I have come full circle. Junior ROTC set me on an amazing azimuth to success, completing 25 years of service in the Army, and completing 20 years as an educator. As a veteran, I believe there is no better program to reconnect veterans back into society than the junior ROTC. Over the years, I have had the privilege to experience the wonderful community of Palaca. As a military brat, I never had the opportunity to grow up in a small town with a rich heritage and history that Palaca possesses. I want to publicly thank my assistant instructors, Sergeant Major Wayland Long and Sergeant First Class Lawrence Espiotis, for their friendship, unending commitment to the cadets, and the professionalism in the conduct of their duties. A word of wisdom, the first year of junior ROTC is focused on cadets discovering who they are, in order to define the character they wish to develop. Palaca has a unique and treasured culture with a rich past and a challenging future to negotiate. Not all progress is beneficial. Progressive initiatives must be rigorously scrutinized and qualified to fit the character of who we are, so as and to not compromise the integrity of our culture. We can say no. However, I pray God's blessing on you, the school board, and the citizens of Palacum and Putnam County. Shalua, shalom, yarushy Jerusalem, which means pray for the peace of Jerusalem. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for allowing us to present our pantry workers, recognition that they well deserve. They put in a lot of time throughout the year for Feed the Need, and so, just to save time, I'd like for all our pantry volunteer recognition people to come up and come here so that we just save time with calling individually names, please. So I want to take a minute and thank y'all. Can y'all hear me without that? Are y'all good? I want to thank y'all very much for everything you do. It's a thankless job. Some of you are helpers to the people. You come pick up food, you make sure that you have contacts to parents, and you make sure the food goes out. And it's a dire need. We put $286,000 worth of food last year in the school system. And without y'all, some of you have been doing it more than one year, some of you are new. I hope you stick it out. But more than anything, I want to introduce you to part of the Feed the Need Board, because we, I, Stacy, could not supply you with the food that you pick up in the warehouse without the ongoing work of all these people every year. So we have our Board Chair, Ms. Renee Huff. Most of y'all probably know her. And our Co-Chair, Bud Minnig Innes. So we have Brittany Goodson. Jackie Porter. We have a couple of people, but they are the working force behind making sure we have funding, helping go out to presentations. Stacy and one of our warehouse volunteers was at the pastoral meeting, monthly meeting, this morning at 8:30 on behalf of raising food through churches and getting churches onboard. So, there's not enough thanks, and it's kind of like a thankless job. You're behind the scenes, but we do appreciate it. We appreciate you all.
So at this time, we're... Good afternoon, Board. So at this time, we are going to recognize our pantry coordinators. Cindy David from Kelly Smith Elementary School. Dakota Whitley, Middleton Bernie Elementary School. Jocelyn Lara, Middleton Bernie Elementary School. Diane Williams, Aquila Elementary School. Holly Johns, James A. Long Elementary School. Howell, Sean Howell, Mellon Learning Center. The letters didn't look right. Leslie Smith, Interlaken Junior Senior High School. Melissa Whittington, Interlaken Junior Senior High School. Michelle Parnell, Palaca Junior Senior High School. Carrie Offord, William D. Mosley Elementary School. Dana Gill, did you? Tina Offord. Okay. And Carlin. Okay.
We want to get a picture of everybody.
Bud needs to be in the back. Bud needs to be in the back.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
At this time, we are going to wrap up with our winter sport recognition of academic team champions, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Bobby Humphries, the Athletic Director from Palaca Junior Senior High School. The FHSAA Academic Team Champion Recognition Program honors teamwork, not only in competition, but in the classroom as well. The program recognizes teams in each of the associations sanctioned and recognized sports, naming an academic team champion in each classification based off GPA. And at this time, Mr. Humphries will share the teams that received this recognition and their amazing GPAs.
Glad I don't have to explain everything that she explained. I want to thank the school board for the opportunity to recognize our academic champion winter sports teams. We'll start off by introducing our coaches, if you'll come on up, and after I introduce them, we'll have them bring their kids up and have a say, say a little bit about their team. Girls Weightlifting, Pam Sharp and Caitlin Smith. Girls Basketball, John L. Williams. Girls Soccer, Haley Miles. Boys Wrestling, Josh White. And we also had Boys Soccer, but Coach Dominguez couldn't be here this afternoon. Let's give them a big hand, please.
I know Caitlin will want to sing a few songs. She's pretty good at that.
Thank you for letting us be here today. My name is Caitlin Smith. I'm the head Girls Weightlifting Coach, and today I have Coach Pam Sharp. She is my assistant. And I have Emma Knighton and Haley Faulkner. Come on up, hold your certificate. Our Girls Weightlifting Team this year was very successful. We won districts in both Traditional and Olympic, and we also won Regionals, and we were regional runner-up in Traditional. We had a really successful year. We hosted an eight-team meet called Feast Mode for Thanksgiving, and we actually brought home the trophy in both Olympic and Traditional in that as well. So, these girls have weighted GPAs above a 4.0. Our team GPA was a 3.355. They're tri-sport athletes, so they're playing three sports and still keeping a GPA over 4.0. Student before athlete is very important in our program. Thank you.
And they've also both hit home runs this year.
They have both hit home runs this year.
Haley's the first Faulkner I've ever seen get an award for academics. Tell your granddad I said that, please.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here. My name is John L. Williams. I am the new head Girls Basketball Coach at Palaca Junior Senior High School. It was Palack High School when I was there. I have the pleasure of having Tatiana Peoples here with me, one of my co-captains. Come on up. The team this year, a lot of change for them, a lot of familiar faces but new faces. They know the expectations. They're always set high with me, whether they're athletically or academically. Keep the bar high, the expectations high, so they can meet them, surpass them. I look forward to being with this group for quite a while. I'd love to see them grow on and off the court. Their team GPA this year was a 3.053. Next year, you're going to see that go up. I'm telling you that now. So, I'm very proud of the group, and I hope you all come out and support this upcoming season.
Thank you for having us here today. I am the Girls Assistant Coach at Palaca Junior Senior High School, and I have with me today Paisley Annabelle. Come on up here. We had an amazing growing season, and I can't wait to watch them grow on and off the field again next season. We take being student athletes very seriously. We dedicate one day a week to study hall, and they love it. No, but we take it very seriously, and we love to watch them grow on and off the field, and we can't wait to see it happen next season, too. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I used to watch you wrestle, so...
Yeah, you're not going to see that now, that's for sure. Things hurt too much. Thank you to Board for allowing us to come up here. Thank you for recognizing all of these student athletes that come up here, because there is a lot of time put on the field, in the mat, wherever they're at, that does, it is detrimental to their grades, especially if I'm their teacher. But anyhow, they work hard to keep everything up, so it's good that the community sees that, because so many people go, well, they're athletes. They're not going to do anything else. But a lot of our athletes go on and do better things. We have a couple that are graduating from wrestling and weightlifting. They're doing great athletically, doing great grade-wise. I know we got softball players out there, so this is a great opportunity. I thank you for that. By the way, I am Josh White, the head wrestling coach. Been there for, like you said, 15 years, so I've been at, yeah, yeah. Been there 15 years. These guys, I'll say, I am proud of them. I would not have expected it from them this year. They got a 3.1, so they pulled it together. So Ben and Hayden would come up here, please, my two captains. I'll say one little thing. Ben, we'll have again next year. Hayden, we're losing this year, and he's going to...
Embry-Riddle, right?
Yes. He's already accepted to go to Embry-Riddle for, what was it again?
Homeland Security and Intelligence.
Homeland Security and Intelligence. Intelligence, there you go. So, thank you again for this. Thank you for your recognition. Here, we got to go here.
Nobody's lost, we can take our picture.
I'm Sarah G. McDaniel, Executive Director of Leadership Development, and I am very proud to be here to honor some wonderful teacher leaders today. This year, each high school, as well as Mellon Learning Center, had the opportunity to honor a teacher at their school as a Teacher of the Month, and this was made possible by HCA, as well as the Education Foundation of Putnam County. So at this time, I would like for representatives of those organizations to come up and join me, please. And we will be honoring the March, April, and May Teachers of the Month at this time. And, I can't, or you can't? Okay. I will turn it over to Mr. Les Sims from the Education Foundation, and he is going to share a little bit about each of our honorees.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, there you are. Board members, even council over there. Mr. Holmes, good to see you. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Les Sims. I'm Chairman of the Board for the Education Foundation of Putnam County. And real quick, I'd like to just introduce a couple of Board members here. We have Shondell Goddard here. We have Dr. Christian Calderon, my apologies, Stephanie Reams, and Yvette Jones. Thank you very much for showing here today. Last year, one of our community partners, HCA Health, decided that they wanted to get a little more involved in the community, as if they haven't done enough already. So they reached out to us, wanting to establish a program to reward the teachers throughout this community. After very little discussion and a complete and unanimous vote by my Board, we were off and running with the Teacher of the Month program. You know, this is just one of the many programs that HCA is involved with, and we really don't have time to sit here today and discuss every one of them, because we would be here quite a while. But without, you know, their support, this community would absolutely feel it. These community partners, they are invaluable to the compassion and the strength that build our community, and we're forever grateful for HCA Florida. David, you want to come on up? We'd like to say thank you, David, for HCA, in stepping up to the plate whenever and wherever we have asked you to. Thank you very much. Now, on to the awards. As I call your name, would you please approach the front and remain here so that we can present you a check and obtain a photo with the Board members? Our first recipient is the March Teacher of the Month, Tiffany Spencer. Tiffany is a resilient, engaged, and fearless teacher. She has stepped up to teach all of the 7th grade math and 8th grade algebra, as well when we needed someone to take over for another teacher. She's been engaged with Impact Florida, attending their national convention in Washington, DC. She does this fearless in all of these duties and more. She, I'm sorry, she does... She has been a key part of our math scores continuing to climb. Tiffany Spencer is an ideal portrait of a teacher leading our future graduates. Mellon Learning Center would be Cheyenne Priebus? Pybus? Pybus, yes. Come on up, Cheyenne. Cheyenne is a problem solver who has the grit to persevere while displaying a high level of empathy for those she works with. Her ability to work collaboratively with her paraprofessionals ensures that her students are engaged in appropriate tasks throughout the day. It is challenging, and it takes empathetic problem solver to main and academically stimulating classroom for 12 young autistic students. Cheyenne continuously approves, improves, and works to improve her own skills so that she creates the best learning environment for her students. Thank you, Cheyenne. And last but not least, we have May recipient, Levi Bennett. Come on up, Mr. Levi. Levi has been instrumental in establishing a successful welding program at Palaca Junior Senior High School. Not only is he a phenomenal mentor, he volunteers his time to work with students after school on their personal projects to help them refine their skill set. on their personal projects to help them refine their skill set. Recently, he had students come to school on Saturday to help prepare them and give them the additional time in the shop before taking their welding certificate tests. Levi has also served as a mentor to young teachers. Levi is always willing to help out with any school projects and getting, while getting the students involved. He is up for any challenge and always has an upbeat, positive attitude. Thank you. That being said, thank you very much. And can we get a picture with the Chair?
You need to get in there, too. Great job. Great job.
The time for presentations is well spent. Anytime we could recognize, applaud, and thank those who go above and beyond duty. Alrighty, we are now ready. Did we get any public?
I did not receive any, but it's been crowded, so.
Okay. That being said, we will now move to our consent agenda. We'll start with you, Mr. Leary.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Bowling and Ms. Whitehurst answered all my questions already, so I have nothing to pull.
All right, thank you, sir. Mrs. Wagner?
I just wanted to pull G6 for discussion and I think we were gonna, may be able to hear from someone with Osley.
Okay, G6. Mr. Buckles?
No, ma'am. I met with district staff and the superintendent prior to the collective bargaining session.
All right, Mrs. Pickens?
I have nothing. I'm glad Ms. Wagner chose G6 just because it's amazing.
Okay, and I have nothing to pull. We're ready for a motion?
I'm getting approval of the consent agenda, Madam Chair.
I'll second that.
Oh, excepting, accepting G6.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been a motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept the consent agenda minus item G6 and it was seconded by Mr. David Buckles. Ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known by aye. Aye. G6.
And if I could, just as a preface to this, in reviewing the documents for today, I saw this and I wanted to make certain I was reading it correctly.
Correct.
So I did speak to Mr. Bowling. He said you could give us a little more insight on what exactly this means, how this came about.
Yeah, so, yeah, so this is what, it's the first of many to come on owner-direct purchase.
Could you identify yourself just for the record?
Todd Duffy. Do I need to give an address or anything? 5230 Southeast 14th Place, Ocala, Florida. One of the owners of Osley Construction. And so this is the first of, you know, many deductive change orders that will be part of the process. This is what we call the owner-direct purchase. So, for instance, on this one, we had three vendors being, well, actually not exactly three, three suppliers. So it's C-Mex, Gate Precast, and Ferguson. So Lighthouse Masonry, who's doing our masonry work, is working with C-Mex. So C-Mex, you know, provides their, their bid document that was to that subcontractor. Then it comes to us and to get owner-direct purchasing. We submit it to Finance. Finance then issues a purchase order, which we've issued those purchase orders and that is, the purchase orders are on the right, on the right side because they wanted that just to be established as part of this change order. And like, so, and then, just so we're completely clear on things. So this is for the, the concrete blocks for the masonry part and that was, so that's all materials. But there's also a delivery fee that comes with that. We don't get the tax savings on the delivery. So on some of these things with freight and delivery, I'm trying to think of other examples. Mainly, it's just those type items, but, because that's not part of the material. It's, it's kind of part of the material, but it's, it's not. We only get the tax savings on the actual product itself. So being that.
Not only the service, but all the products?
Correct, on that. And then we don't get any tax savings on the labor part once we start putting those blocks and things in place. So on that particular line item, you know, the sales tax savings was $24,211.20. The next one was Gate Precast. That material, you know, was a tax savings of $61.57. And then on Ferguson, for the plumbing materials, was a $3,486, $386.43. So again, this is just the first three of many to come. I mean, we, so right now, as a complete, your tax savings to date is the $33,546.3. And, you know, what we anticipate is we'll be pretty close to a million dollar savings in tax savings with all the different products that will keep coming before you. This is just the start of many more to come. So I don't know if that clears the questions that you might have had.
Clearing lies the definition of a deductive change order. They're deducting that.
It's deducting, yes.
From the, the price.
Right.
The GMP.
Right. But we're still responsible for all these materials, you know, administrating them, coming through. We'll be signing it off. Like, your department has put together POs. They won't pay that PO without my project manager's signature to it. And we've talked it through and.
And we have a system in place that, you know, we have people, staff, and our, our, Greg is known as our design manager and all that. So we have a number of people sign off on that.
Yes.
And just on the, on the one change order that I've got in front of me here, too, it says that the contract, your contract for the.
It's reduced out of our contract, you know, all the way, I mean, it's, it's reduced that whole $743,586. But that's, that's a deduct out of our contract and, but you guys are, they're gonna, like, so Finance is still paying those material costs out as, when those materials hit the site. It will get, you know, eventually you'll pay for that part of it. You'll still pay for those materials. It's just, you'll end up having that tax savings. So, and like I said, when it's, when we're through with the whole process, you guys will be close, or if not, higher than a million dollar savings on this project altogether.
Right. Yeah, that's why I.
But where we're at right now is the $33,854, so.
Savings is savings.
Yes, yeah, no. And, and we want to keep pushing these through and, and, you know, we know every dollar counts, so.
I had just asked Mr. Bowling, who, who's, apparently this, was this in the plan to have these types of things occur?
Yes.
Or was this something that, that somebody said, hey, wait a minute, we can do it this way and?
No, no. This is, this is typically what we do throughout the state with government agencies because you guys are tax exempt and, you know, no different than when I used to run the concession stand at one of the Little League fields, they're tax exempt. And, you know, when I purchased things at Sam's, I didn't have to, I paid for the product, but I didn't pay the tax for it. Just like, you're, you're tax exempt, so all the materials, we try to make sure it gets established where you're tax exempt, saving that money.
And I just want to make sure that I'm real clear on it because on, on here, it does say, it says the original guaranteed maximum price was, and it's got the 60 million, and then, then it says the, that amount would be decreased.
It's decreased, that is correct.
$743,000.
Because it is decreased out of our contract, as of, out of Osley's contract. But what you guys still have in finances, you still have a pot of money.
That needs to go towards those materials.
That's gonna go towards those materials after we sign off that those materials have made this, made it to the site. Then you'll start paying those out. So it's not like, no, it's not like you're getting a $700,000 savings right now from the project.
But we are getting a, a good chunk.
No, so basically, yeah, so the tax savings, what, you, you're saving 6% on all the material cost. So that's, that's what your tax savings is here in Putnam County.
And we'll see any additional ones in the future? Will we be seeing these again or?
You'll be seeing a bunch, yeah, you'll be seeing a bunch of these. They'll all be deductive and it will, like, so, you know, like, when it comes down to it, then the, you know, my contract's gonna end up not looking like 60 million. It's gonna look, you know, probably closer to 40 million when it's said and done, but it's not necessarily.
Like we're not paying that money.
It's not like you're not paying that money, but, and, and we're still responsible for all those materials and, and handling it and make sure, you know, that they're going into your product building. It's just, you guys are, you know, you don't have to pay the taxes for it. So we try to save that money towards the, for you guys as the county and the school board.
All right. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate the explanation.
I'm not as great at talking like this as Ken. Ken can smooth the vibe better, but he was a little tied up today.
Hey, you did great. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we do accept item G6, change order number one for Osley Construction Company for Palaka A-School.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mrs. Linda Wagner that we accept item G6 and it was seconded by Mr. David Buckles. Any further questions? If not, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known by aye. Aye.
We don't have any emergency items, do we?
All right, I didn't see it when I printed. Okay, so at this time, we are now in emergency session.
L1.
Do we need a motion or, I mean?
If you need Mr. Bowling, he's.
Because he, he presented, so it's up to us now.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I, I move approval of item L1, the proposed contracts for instructional and classified employees.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept item L1, the PFT proposed contracts, and instructional and classified. It was seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Any questions, comments? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known by aye. Aye. Motion carries. We are now out of emergency session. And we move to our new business in, in one and two, items one and two.
Two was taken off.
Okay, yes, there it is, removed, biggest day. All right, item number one, in one. Ready for a motion?
Um, well, I would like some further clarification if Jonathan could do that.
Okay.
Hello again.
Hi. So, can you just explain this in layman's terms?
Okay, so coming into the role, purchasing card is one thing we're gonna be revamping for the district to take advantage of more benefits. And looking at the policy, this policy hasn't been changed since 2012, so it was very outdated with numbers. It stated 1.5K for any purchasing card and 5,000 for the superintendent. So I took that language out. I added a part in there where it said, birth date may also have to be provided to banks because Home Depot just required that due to the Patriot Act. Then I added a part lower saying the superintendent's P-card limit would be 20,000, which is actually a reduction of what it is now. And then I also added a part at the very bottom stating that any other P-cards would be based on the budget, so the yearly budget. So if a district only has a thousand, or district, if a department only has $1,000, then they only get $1,000. If we can manage to give them 2,000 that year, we give them 2,000. So this is going into long-term plan of revamping our P-card where we can earn more rebates in different areas and possibly even getting it down to the granular where a principal might have a P-card. So long-term plan, this is kind of setting that up while also correcting pretty much inflation from 2012. It's just not being done since 2012. So as far as the one number in there that I did provide, the superintendent's P-card limit will be reduced down to $20,000.
Do we have a question?
Jonathan, the, the purchasing card covers materials and what else? Does it cover travel?
Um, it, yes, it can cover travel. There are, there are restrictions on what can be, through the Florida Red Book, on what can be purchased through a P-card, but travel is allowed.
And has that been the policy for?
I believe it's been allowed since I've been here since in 2020. I don't know how far before.
Payment comes out of the travel cost strip for that department.
Right, I understand that.
Approximately, how many cards do we have?
Right now, I don't think there's more than ten.
Oh, okay, that's management.
Now, when, when I, as far as what I was saying a second ago, when I do get to the point where we expand on it, if everything works the way I heard about other districts doing and I could get there, we could have one at every school. I mean, it can be as, technically, we can go down to as granular as we want and then it's like a tiered hierarchy where I can control these budgets and that person can control their department budget, so on and so forth. So how granular we get, I don't know. That hasn't actually been discussed. But the whole point of it is, long-term, is to get more rebate money back because I heard of one specific district doing this exact thing and they completely paid for their finance department through rebates alone. So money coming in through rebates, depending on how much money we spend.
And Jonathan, one thing you brought up to us in our meeting was there'll be some instructions given to P-card holders on exactly what they can use that for and a lot of guidance and they'll sign off on it before.
Correct. That is a procedural, the document that we already have and the people that already have P-cards have already signed that document and should follow those.
And so who, who reviews that?
Uh, it would be through our APT, Kim Mann, and then, who is our Director of Finance, and then our APT team is Carol and Pam.
So on a monthly basis, everybody's ABD, ABD, uh, card is, bill is reviewed to ensure that it, it complies with the guidelines?
So the, these reviews are actually going through on a weekly basis when they're putting the charges in and approving them for pay. And when they catch something, that's when they bring it up.
Okay.
So weekly?
So we pay everything, we, well, our specific goes card, we pay bi-weekly, but we pay invoices weekly. And to what you're referencing, we check all of the expenditures that come through weekly as we pay them. So just kind of expanding on that, everything we pay, they check.
And so the 3% rebate, like I have on my, my, one of my credit cards, that, you know, you have to apply, do we have to apply for those rebates? Or, or how does that work?
I haven't got that far. The card that we currently have set up was set up before I got here, so I haven't got that far. And that'll honestly, that'll probably happen after we get swapped over to our new bank. That way we don't have too much going on with all the school bills and everything at the same time.
So, what is it, South State, will we, will we issuing?
Not necessarily. We have, we're probably gonna go out for an RFP for that or a solicitation of some sort.
Okay.
They are more than welcome to apply, though.
I'm good.
Okay, alrighty.
Madam Chairman, I will make a. Uh, Madam Chairman, I will make a motion to approve, um, in one, consists to advertise amendment to policy 6424, the purchasing cards.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept, uh, the consensus to advertise amendment to policy 6424, purchasing card, and it was seconded by Mrs. Linda Wagner. And it, it's not necessary to do a vote, we, I mean, a count from district, so we just vote on this one.
No, it's a roll call.
It's a roll call, so at this time.
You want a roll call there?
Yes, ma'am.
Alrighty.
Call the question.
Yes, oh, let's go ahead and wrap it up. Thank you. Alrighty, um, no further discussion. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Got a roll call.
Oh, okay, roll call, okay.
So, all in favor, District one?
Approve.
District two?
Approve.
District three?
Approve.
District four?
Approve.
District five?
Approve.
Okay. Okay, we are now ready for our reports. We'll start with you, Mrs. Pickens, since you started with Mr. Leary for consensus.
Um, I, uh, don't have much. I, I do want to say how much I enjoy the presentations, and, you know, the retirements. Um, I was very sad to see Ms. Viola is retiring after three years. But, um, if you get into education to make a difference, she has definitely made a difference in her three years at Crescent City Junior/Senior High School, not just for the high school, but for the whole district, I believe. Um, so I really, I'm happy for her. Um, she did kind of tell me that she might come back the following year, so that would be wonderful. Um, and then I'd just like to thank Denise Bramlett for all of her hard work with Feed the Need. I, she is so passionate about that project, and, and you see how many helpers she recruits. And it was nice to see Mr. McGinnis. Um, I haven't seen him for a pretty good, long time. So, um, I'm looking forward to senior awards and, and different events that are coming up. And, um, this is an exciting time of the year. I know that the young lady that I mentor has a big geometry test tomorrow, so, um, as do a lot of students in our district. So, just hoping they get a good night's rest and, um, and eat a nice breakfast and be ready to do well on their test, and that's all I have.
Mr. Buckles?
It's been a long, long afternoon, but, uh, enjoyed it. It was pretty informative. Um, a lot of ball games, softball, baseball, kids doing good things, you know, carpentry, hog sales, you name it, it's all going on. It's, it's quite, quite, quite nice. But, uh, I just, uh, right now looking forward to graduation and just hoping that we do everything we can to keep our kids safe, and principals let them know about driving and all that. And I, I think they'll take care of it and do the best they can, but I'll pass for now. That's good.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mrs. Wagner? What I wanted to say first, um, because I believe it is Law Enforcement Appreciation Month. Um, so I did want to say a big thank you for law enforcement. Even though one scared me to death today as I was heading here and put his lights on right when he got to me. But, uh, but no, I'm very thankful for them, um, you know, here locally and all across our county. Uh, we live way far away from, from downtown Palaca. And, uh, in Melrose, we're still able to, to get the help we need, and I'm just really thankful for that. And then, I did just want to say, I, I was happy to see the Troy University trip, I believe, for the band. Um, and it just took me back because when I was in high school, we went to, I think it was Troy State University, uh, at the time. But we were able to go there as well, and it was just a huge memory for me. Uh, so, really hope they enjoy their trip. And then, I wanted to say thanks, too, for all the, the teachers and students we had in Melrose. We had the first annual Melrose May Fair this past weekend. Um, all-day, uh, music and fun and kids' crafts and vendors and food. And it was, it was exhausting, but it was wonderful, and it was really nice to see several of our local teachers and lots and lots of kids. So we had a great time. Hope to do that again this next year. And as with everyone else, I'm looking forward to all the, the happy part of the year, the graduations and, uh, and these events. And it's going to be a, a fun month.
Alrighty, thank you. Mr. Leary?
I'd like to also say thank you, uh, I think this is Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yes.
And, you know, um, I get to Kelly Smith about every week, so I eat lunch with my two seven-year-old granddaughters, and, which is always a treat, but, you know, I'm just never amazed at how, watching the teachers and the things that they do, how much influence they have in a positive way on, on all these kids is, is something, no matter what school that I go to. Um, I had the opportunity to attend the Palaca Junior/Senior High School FFA banquet, uh, which was a great success. They had a wonderful year. Um, and, um, that group is really growing. Um, I'm hoping that we can keep both our junior high and, and high school, um, ag teachers and, and advisors because that's what's key, key to the program, and I'm hoping, hoping we'll, knock on wood, be able to keep them for a long time to come. Um, just wanted to mention, as I did earlier, about the, uh, the Board Budget Workshop. As soon as the governor signs a budget, and, you know, I'm reading things that it may be the end of the month, or it could be in, into June, which I'd be surprised before he signs it. Um, but as soon as he signs it, that we can schedule a board workshop. Uh, and hopefully that'll give Jonathan and, and, uh, his staff some, some time to kind of look at some things. And I know you and, um, um, Ron are going to be working on some things, and that may happen after our workshop, but maybe we can have a couple workshops before we get into the, the final stages of the budget. Um, and I still, you know, would love to help and coordinate in some way if we can. Um, you know, an event, uh, an employment fair for bus drivers. Um, you know, I'm starting to think that I might be driving one here. I had a CDL at one time. I let it lapse, but, um, but I, I am concerned about that because, you know, many of, being a rural county, a lot of our students depend on, on those buses to, uh, to get to school. So, um, hopefully, uh, you know, I'm, I'm glad to go out and twist arms and raise some money, Tanya, to, to pay for something if we can do at the high school, if you think that would help. Um, I know you and Mr. Bowlen are kind of exasperated, it's, in, everything that you've tried. Um, but it, it is important. I, I think there's a lot of misinformation about what a school bus driver does today compared to what maybe they did, you know, 15 years ago, and some of the things they had to, to deal with. So, anyway, um, that's all I have, Madam Chairman.
All right, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, did you want, you mentioned a workshop, and I just need to know kind of the consensus of the board on that?
Okay.
On the budget workshop?
Budget workshop. Favor? 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 Favor?
Okay. And if you, after the governor, we said when the governor signs the budget?
Right, yeah, just to know where we are.
So let's get together and just schedule that. Once we have a, once, once he signs it, then we can schedule that with the board.
All right.
Yeah.
Just want to congratulate Michael Chairs on being named Assistant Principal of the State of Florida. Just so humble, just, just a fine young man, and, and, and we're pleased that he's from Putnam County. He's one of ours, homegrown, went through our school system, you know. And then congratulations to Superintendent Cerancy. He will be presenting on School Climate in Savannah, Georgia.
Thank you.
That just doesn't happen. You have to do something in order to be invited to tell other people how you got it done. So, so we need to keep those things in mind when we look, or whatever. Uh, congratulations to Isabella Thomas, a young lady, I think she's at Palaca High School. Uh, she did a sculpture, uh, of a, it was an ocean or something, it was just, and Palaca Daily News did a great, uh, article on it. And she and her family drove to Richmond, Virginia to see it on display. Uh, congratulations to Palaca High Girls softball team and track team, first time ever, were both one district. And so congratulations to Coach Smith and Coach Buckles and Coach Passmore, Passmore and Coach Wright. Uh, and then, um, just an awesome day, uh, watching the students at QI Roberts. Uh, usually we are accustomed to the schools having the athletes sign for the college. They reveal where they're going. Well, QI put on a college signing day, uh, for their students, and I took the time to, to watch it on, on their, uh, the website. Just awesome. To see those young people, and they, they were excited. And every school that had students going to it, they got to come up and actually sign and parade in front of the camera with their school's logo, et cetera, and, and we saw chumps and all of that. It was just great. And that's what it's all about. So, uh, we just want to congratulate all of our students that have worked hard this school year, uh, having dealt with some of the pandemic, and yet they, they, they stayed the course and have done well. And for our teachers and parents and all that, that worked to get it done. And that concludes, uh, mine. All right, Mr. Attorney?
I have nothing unless, uh, any of you have questions about anything I'm working on. And a side note, chumps will never be great.
Yeah, uh, they put the principal in a predicament because he, he, when the Florida State, uh, came up, he, yeah. But it was just great. All right, Mr. Superintendent?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and again echo about Teacher Appreciation, Appreciation Week. We just want to, you know, thank all our teachers for all the hard work they do. And we put out a little video message on Facebook today, and, you know, all kind of stuff. I, I was actually packing apples today during my civic luncheon, and going to deliver some tomorrow, so apples for teachers. I did, I was, uh, I have several things I want to just highlight. Uh, I think last week I went to Jacksonville with a couple of our principals. And, uh, Putnam County and Duval County are part of what they call the Thrive Scholars Program, where juniors, y'all probably heard this before, but juniors who are basically minority students who have a economic need, however, have, uh, excellent grades and, you know, or college, you know, destined to go to college. We, there's business leaders in Duval County who actually help fund, fund this program. They provide, um, tuition and provide other mentoring and that type of thing. But the neatest thing is during, between your junior and senior year, they get to go stay at a college, like an out-of-state college, and really experience that, that, uh, college life, which I think is really important because, you know, as well as I do, a lot of kids go off to college and they miss mama, and they, they're coming on back home, you know, so they give them that experience. And we have some students that were up there, and I got to meet some of the students from Duval County. And, uh, actually, I didn't tell Jonathan this, one of them wants to come actually shadow Jonathan because she's actually going to be going into finance. So, expect a call on that one. She wants to come just see how it's done. But, yeah, I was so amazed by these students are so driven and really kind of helped to break that cycle, cycle of poverty that some of them may be in. Uh, real quick, our Bond Oversight Committee met, uh, the day after our last board meeting, and it was a great meeting, and I want to thank all of our contractors and people who came out and presented and just provided a lot of information about what's going on. Uh, and again, we're looking at, again, the school year of '25, '26, again, somewhere in there to, um, for those schools to open, those two bond schools. Speaking of the other school, Crescent City Junior/Senior High School, in case you haven't, you should have gotten an invite for the May 17th groundbreaking. And I believe that is at what time? 10 o'clock? 10 o'clock on that day? And we invited a number of people to attend that. Should be a great day for Crescent City. Still waiting on the governor to sign some stuff, you know, but we'll let you know about that. We had our all-ages luncheon, April 23rd, and thanks to the Isaiah City Quanis, which I'm a member, and, uh, hosted that. It was a great event. Our, I'm actually in the process now of visiting all of our secondary schools and walking classrooms with the, the principal and the area director and looking at a lot of their tested courses, so that's been very, very helpful to me to see that. Uh, again, echo the congratulations to Michael Chairs. We had a great time surprising him. People from Department of Education came out. You probably saw that on Facebook. And we actually tricked Michael into coming up to the office from the cafeteria. They told him we had a parent and needed to see him, and he walks in and he's just blown away. And Michael doesn't like that kind of attention, but it was, and then they had a parade the next day, I think. So, he was totally embarrassed, but that's okay. Comes with it. And just, you know, we have, uh, multiple winners, just to talk about the value of our leadership and people who are in the district. Uh, the year before, let's see, in 2019, Tiffany Scranton, who's the principal now, Milton Bernie, was the, one of the finalists for the Assistant Principal of the Year, you know, of the state, 2019. Sarah Jean McDaniel, who's in the audience out there, was the Principal of the Year for 2020. Uh, Yours Truly was the Superintendent of the Year in 2023, and then now Mr. Chairs in 2024. So again, Putnam County is, is in the news, and I think it says a lot about our employees. We held our final Superintendent's Community Engagement Session of the Year at, um, the District Center at Seale on April 23rd at 6:00. And then we will start up our, our next round of that next year. So that's been very helpful. We had the Bartram Frolet Week, where all second grade students enjoy the field trips to learn about our local history. If you got a chance to go down there, the riverfront, you know, very instrumental. I, I had some data that showed that 5,000 second graders over the last, how many years, Ashley? Four or five years, something like that.
I noticed it happened in the district for sure, and we did it over the last year.
So it's been five, six years, maybe? 5,000, 5,000 of our second graders have gone through that. And, you know, they got on, they go on the boat, and then, uh, you know, they have the little protection, the life preservers. But I guarantee you, 99% of those kids have never been on the river, so I'm sure that was an experience. If you haven't got a chance to go see the musical Drowsy Chaperone, um, I went last Friday, and there's another weekend to go, but it's, it's an excellent one. He actually did this back in 2010. So, it's kind of neat seeing that version and seeing this version. I actually helped build the sets back in 2010 because I had a daughter in that. Uh, and finally, our product to Putnam honorees. And, and we will, just as a reminder, have breakfast for them this Friday, and GP is sponsoring that. Ashley, the time of that breakfast? 10 o'clock, right here in this room. You got the invitations. Let me, for the record, announce the winners, if you haven't seen that already. Are you confused?
Um, I did, I don't know if I got an invitation. Was it emailed to us? Oh, it was emailed.
Email? Oh, okay.
Glad I said something.
This Friday?
Friday, May the 10th, 10 o'clock.
You're making your grits?
Ashley, please, I hear it's a tangerine.
Oh, it's been tangerine.
Yeah, Georgia Pacific has sponsored this and also some other stuff that we're going to be presenting to them. But in the area of agriculture, Larry Corn, who is a Palaca South High School graduate, 1969, a year or two before Mr. Buckles.
He got, he got me in a lot of trouble in high school.
Yeah.
Those stories will remain forever untold, right? In the area of business, former Mayor Terrill Hill, Esquire, Palaca High School, 1990. Community service, Mark Modle, Palaca High School, 1993. In the area of education, Steve Cummings, Crescent City High School, 1991. I love calling, I actually called Tim Adams and said, I need you to call, I called them all and told them, I need you to call Mr. Cummings to the office. I need to speak to him personally, and of course. Yeah, he, he's not sure what's going on, but I, I love the drama, you know? So he, he was quite impressed. Uh, industrial manufacturing, Matthew Holbrook, Matt Holbrook.
Good deal.
And, uh, Palaca High School, 2005. Healthcare, Heather Robinson, Heather Davis Robinson, Palaca High School, 1994. And finally, in the area of public service, Major Steve Rose, works for the Sheriff's Office, graduate of Interlocken High School, 1986. So, good group, and, um, as you know, if you remember, we honor them at their house, this year's graduation from their album honor. But we started this breakfast, did we start that last year?
I can't remember.
Last year, and it's a great time because that's, we can really get to talk to them personally, so. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, I'll close with this. Um, the Good Book states that Philip told, uh, Nathaniel, say, "Come see a man," and this man was from Nazareth, and you have an idea who the man was. And just because he was from Nazareth, the question was asked, can any good thing come out of Nazareth? And just because he was from Nazareth, the question was asked, can any good thing come out of Nazareth? After her, having heard of all of these great accomplishments out of Putnam County.
Yeah.
I asked the question, can any good thing come out of Putnam County? A resounding yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you don't believe it, come and see.
That's it.
All right, with that?
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.